Okay, do we have everyone in?
Yes, we should be all set.
Great, okay. Good evening. I am calling this public meeting to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public evening, public hearing this evening on June 21st, 2023, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. Tonight's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging a Twitter handle at Boston and Byron using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I'm Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the City of Boston's Environment Department.
Christopher Edwards with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. I'll call the role of the Commissioner's present. Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Okay, and I understand Commissioner Sullivan is not here. He may be joining us a little bit later. Okay. First item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP File Number 0061944 and Boston File Number 2023-033 from Kyle Zick, Landscape Architecture, Inc., on behalf of Boston Parks and Recreation for the proposed removal of invasive species, improvement and expansion of vegetated buffer along a portion of the shoreline, and installation of a temporary vegetation protecting fencing. Yeah, vegetate temporary vegetation protecting fencing located at Lake Shore Road in Brighton. The resource areas are bordering vegetated wetlands, inland bank, 25-foot waterfront area, 100-foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands, 100-foot buffer to inland bank. This was continued from the June 7th, 2023 hearing. Elena, I think what we were waiting for in this one was a DEP file number, so that we have it. Do you recall any other? I don't have in my notes any other questions we had for the applicant?
I don't have anything in my notes either.
I, okay, I think this was the one where Commissioner Sullivan was interested in the tree issues.
Specifically what?
And so was I.
Okay, okay, what is the issue?
The removal of trees. I think both Commissioner Sullivan and Richmond had raised the issue that the city was taking out a lot of trees when it's their interest in planting trees and wanted some more detail on that.
Okay, so where did we leave it? Are we getting a tree inventory? Is that?
I think we had asked for something like that. I know that Commissioner Sullivan had, and I did as well. There, yeah.
Yeah, so let's go to the applicant. Have you been able to provide a tree inventory?
So we have. Yes, we have updated materials that shows the count of what is getting removed in each area and then what is being put back, and we have changed those numbers since the submission for the June 7th hearing.
Okay, great.
Revised our.
Perfect. If you could just identify yourself and who's here to talk for the applicant.
Sorry, this is Tracy Hudek for Kyle Zick Landscape Architecture.
Okay, anyone else?
This is Amy Lanave, the project manager for Boston Parks.
Okay, what would you like?
I must recuse myself from this hearing.
Oh, well, if you're recusing yourself from this hearing, we can't have it. So we don't have a quorum.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so Amy, apologies. If you want to hang on, maybe Commissioner Sullivan, he's going to try to join us at 6:30. If the meeting goes on that long, then perhaps we can have this hearing, but we'll need to suspend it for now.
Okay, we'll cross our fingers that he's able to join.
Yep, okay, sorry about that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is DEP File Number 0061945 and Boston File Number 2023-034 from Bowler, on behalf of Dorchester Two Michaels LLC, care of the Michaels Organization for the Proposed Development of a Six-Tory Residential Building located at 800 Morrissey Boulevard. Dorchester Resource Area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. So again, Elena, my recollection is this one, we were waiting for a DEP file number. Do you have anything in your notes that we need anything else from the applicant?
No, and we have the DEP file number now, so.
Okay, on that, any of the other commissioners have a different recollection for this project?
No.
Okay. Yep, I don't either. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second? Second. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries support and nothing. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from Langdon Engineering and Environmental Services on behalf of Nanfeng Life Sciences Real Estate LLC, NFLSRE 470 Atlantic LLC for the proposed renovations to convert a portion of existing office space to lab science lab space with associated fire protection and utility service work within the plaza area located at 470 Atlantic Avenue in Boston. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, this is John Perry from Langdon Engineering.
This is Nick Hunwell on behalf of Ownership.
Okay, who'd like to begin?
I can begin. We have a presentation that I had sent over earlier in the week. Yep, excellent. Thank you. So again, John Perry, Langdon Engineering, representing the applicant Nanfeng. Also on the team is North Star, the OPM, and we do a site contractor, general contractor, Wise Construction. And you can see the existing building there in the photograph, which sits on the corner of Atlantic Ave and Seaport Boulevard. It's an existing office building, which the project is a partial conversion of some of that interior space to lab space. Go to the next slide, please. This is just a locus map here with a star showing the parcel. And another photograph, just to kind of orient yourselves. Part of the building does sit within the four-point channel. It's supported by piers on the back. It's a third or so of the building, and you can see the channel that's come up alongside the Harbor Walk there between the building property and Seaport Boulevard, which has been defined as the resource area, as a coastal bank along an existing granite seawall. Next slide, please. To support the office-to-lab space conversion, the project requires a new curb cut modification on Atlantic Ave, which is shown, but it's outside of the, I don't know if I can point to this. I'll just try to describe it the best I can. We've highlighted the 100-foot wetland buffer there in blue, which is kind of clips the E on Atlantic Avenue, and then comes back into the building there. You can see the blue shading as the four-point channel resource area. The curb cut on Atlantic Avenue would be totally outside of the 100-foot buffer, but there is some work within the 100-foot buffer, which includes a new gravity sewer, fire protection service, and domestic water, and new steam service, which would require the demolition or temporary demolition of the plaza area there between the building and Seaport Boulevard in order to facilitate the utility installation. And that plaza would be rebuilt in kind once the utility work is installed. So total limit of work within the wetland buffer for that is just under 5,000 square feet, so about a tenth of an acre, pretty minimal. Go to the next slide, please. This is just a close-up of some of those utilities I just described, show a little more detail. Next slide. Yep, and that's just the other side of the building there, showing the sewer water steam as well. Next slide, please. There's some, again, some photographs, just to kind of get a better sense of what this looks like and what we're proposing. So that's the curb cut. Existing photo of the curb cut area on Atlantic Avenue. We just be kind of reworking the existing curb cut to facilitate a bit of a loading space there. Next slide. And then this is that plaza area mentioned that we have to temporarily remove in order to do the excavation and utility installation. So a lot of it is brick, some concrete, some decorative granite. So that would, to the extent possible, just be stockpiled on-site while the insulation is occurring and then, again, rebuilt in kind as well. Next slide. And then this is just a photograph of the, kind of how the channel comes up between Seaport Boulevard and that plaza that we were just looking at, so you can get a better sense of what we were calling that resource area. And you can see kind of below that teal-colored railing, as you look down there, there's the existing seawall, which wraps around the back of the building as well. And I would note that this is part of the Harbor Walk, which is, you know, Chapter 91, under Chapter 91 jurisdiction. So we would separately be coordinating with the DEP office, the Chapter 91 office as well. Next slide, please. And just to note as well, we're also coordinating with, we have a file into the Boston Warren Sewer Commission for the utility installations and the Public Works Department for the curb cut. This is a map of the FEMA floodplain with a note depicting where the property locus is. The elevations on here are listed in NAVD 88, just so it's relevant and relative to the FEMA floodplain. So all the work, so the floodplain elevation, the 1% BFE is at elevation 10. You can see where we're not within the velocity zone. The first floor elevation is 13 and a half, and all the work will take place between elevation 13 and 19 and a half, so where all the work is above the sea level, the floodplain, excuse me. The projected sea level rise, because we are in the Conservation Overlay District here. Predicted sea level rise is elevation 13, so a three-foot increase. But that, as you can see, that we would still be above that elevation, the first floor and the proposed work. Next slide, please. And, you know, we have, along the way with our design and coordination with the Lawrence Sewer Commission as well, you know, considered certain climate change resiliency aspects. We looked at some stormwater improvements with the Boston Warren Sewer Commission as well, and this is very, very little space to do a whole lot for stormwater improvements, but we have committed to installing sedum trays on the roof area and in certain parts of the roof area where it's structurally stable to do so in order to, you know, do the best we can to promote, you know, vegetation, green roof, low-impact development. Next slide. Well, that might be the last slide. Yep, that's it. So, and again, we're, you know, in for a RDA and would love to answer any questions we have.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. So just a couple of quick things before we get going. I don't, I don't think you do qualify for the exemption that this is utility work for public use. The service is just one building, right?
It does.
Okay, though I do think you're under 5,000 square feet, clearly less than 10% of the buffer zone itself, minor activities. So that's, that seems fine to me. Excuse me, the sort of a little bit off-topic, the steam. It sounds like that my understanding of that is that the steam is not, not, non. It's renewable energy sources. And so this is new building. Is it passive house? I mean, it's a lab. Maybe it's not passive house, but just a little bit about that would be interesting.
Yeah, the steam definitely is, you know, more sustainable renewable energy source that the tenant-owner is definitely interested in. They have steam now. We're going to be increasing that, so we can utilize that as well with the, you know, increased energy requirements. You know, Nick, I don't know, you know, if this, I don't recall if this is like a LEED-certified building already. I don't believe it's, you know, that.
It is. It's certified LEED gold, and that's the intention for the project going forward.
Great, good. Okay, yep, that's good enough. Okay, so with that, Elena, what do you have for this?
I don't have anything on this beyond the standard notes on RDAs, which are in the folder, but nothing, nothing specific.
Okay, and I see you've prepared some conditions for us that look like they hit the mark here. Commissioner Long, what do you have?
I don't have anything on this, Chair Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I need to understand something. Have you determined by your question, Mr. Chair, that the exemption applies because it's such a small project in the in the zone that we're concerned about?
No, no exemption applies here. The exemption I think that they cited was utilities, providing utilities to the public, and I think that's generally an exemption that goes to utility companies or something that is clearly for the public writ large as opposed to one building, where I was referring to is criteria to issue a negative determination of applicability, which is minor activities that can be basically controlled by your standard soil and erosion techniques that are of a smaller area, in this case, less than 5,000 square feet or less than 10,000, not 10,000, 10% of the entire buffer area.
Okay, so that's where you focused, that this, the five, I heard the number. I just am not familiar with that. So I guess what my question is, and it may may not just not be relevant to this particular project, but, you know, we have now had a bunch of people or applicants before us where they need multiple approvals to get the work done. And it sounds to me like this project is similar in having multiple approvals. And so I'm concerned that we treat all of those projects similarly. And so the fact that they haven't gotten any of the approvals that they are going to need to do this work at this point, I guess my question is whether or not it's right for us to make a determination that, where, a determination that it's not, that their project is not applicable to us.
Yeah, I guess there's two things on that. One is DEP, we've had this come up before, as far as Chapter 91. They don't issue any Chapter 91 licensing or determinations until the applicant actually has cleared the Conservation Commission, local Conservation Commission, number one. Number two, what I would say about this is where we're careful, where we're concerned that other approvals have not been issued. That's generally something that could change the project and the project. So in other words, I think we had one, we have one another part of the city right now that's going through zoning. And so the project might change. This utility work is not going to change pursuant to any further approvals. But that does, you do bring up a point, and I'm going to get back to him. Commissioner Sullivan did join us, so he might have something to say about BWSC approval.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate those answers.
Okay, great. Okay, Commissioner Herbst, if you don't mind, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Sullivan, then I'll get to you.
Just joined, and I have no clue what we're talking about, but that is the first time.
So this is utility work over on your four-point channel, 470 Atlantic Ave.
Okay.
And John, do you want to quickly bring Commissioner Sullivan up to speed on where you stand with BWSC?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, so we made a filing to BWSC last month, probably about 30, 45 days ago. We did get some initial comments back from their office there, pretty minor comments, in my opinion, and we're working through those now. We plan to be resubmitting, you know, in the very near future. So I don't, you know, it's been any major changes at all here.
No, and I had reviewed them and sent them back for some comments for you guys to, you know, take care of them. I didn't see major issues at all on that particular project.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Sullivan, any other comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm clean. I'm sorry. I enjoyed you guys late, so I'm good.
Yep, okay, and thank you for joining us. Commissioner Herbst?
I just had a quick question about the roof seedum, and maybe some of this can be a conversation perhaps with Elena, but we have difficulty convincing applicants to do green roofs, and I'm wondering if this, by any chance, is a somewhat simpler type of green roof? If you have anything to say about cost or weight or challenges? That's something we want to recommend.
Yeah, I can weigh in. I can give you some more information on the product as well that we're looking at. But they're fairly, you know, typical seedum trays. I think they're four inches deep. It can be kind of placed fairly simply on the roof. You know, the structural engineer did look at the roof areas, and we were pretty particular about where we could place them. We're, I think, with this particular building, we got a little bit lucky that, you know, there were some good areas that were already structurally sound that could handle the seedum trays. So we're putting as many as we can on the roof.
That would, thank you for that, and I think it would be helpful to have the material on it with our office. Thank you.
Yeah, I can send it to Elena.
Great, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand and type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston and Byron using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Elena, do you see anybody from the public? Raise their hand.
I don't see any raised hands at the moment, no.
Nothing in the chat? Okay.
Nothing in the chat.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with the conditions that Elena has drafted for us, standard soil and erosion controls.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye, aye on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the Boston Parks and Rec proposal. So Commissioner Long, you need to recuse yourself for this one. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'll call it again. Notice of intent for DEP File Number 0061944 and Boston File Number 2023-033 from Kyle Zick Landscape Architecture, Inc. on behalf of Boston Parks and Recreation for the proposed removal of invasive species, improvement and expansion of vegetated buffer along a portion of the shoreline, installation of a temporary vegetation protecting fencing located at Lake Shore Road in Brighton, Mass. The resource areas are BVW, inland bank, 25-foot waterfront area, 100-foot buffer to BVW, 100-foot buffer to inland bank. This has been continued from the June 7th, 2023 hearing. And Tracy and Amy, we're back on again. And just to set it up, Commissioner Sullivan, last time this was before us, we did not have a DEP file number, and also both you and Commissioner Richmond had asked for information regarding tree removal. And that's what the applicant's going to present to us tonight.
That's correct. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Great, thanks for having us back, and I'll just turn it right over to Tracy to present.
Thank you. This is Tracy Hudek with Kyle Zick Landscape Architecture. There we go, thank you. So again, this is the Boston Parks and Recreation Department project, improvements to Chandler Pond. The greater park is Gallagher Memorial Park in Brighton. Next slide. And so at the June 7th hearing, there was some concern about the fact that the number of trees being removed exceeded the number of new trees being planted. And so we went back and revisited the plans, making adjustments to that. So here you'll see the trees that are proposed for removal, the number that was, that we presented at the June 7th hearing, and then the number we are proposing today. In general, we have halved the number of trees that will be removed. What we did was we focused on the most insidious invasive, so that's primarily Norway maples as well as those trees that were causing a hazard or seemed like they were unstable in some ways. So for instance, there's a leaning black locus that is still on the list to be removed as it leans over a path. So again, we have approximately halved the number of removals. And I think we go to the next slide, that's a zoomed-in version of sort of where most of the work is focused. And so you can see the removals there. This previously had a good deal, number more black locusts. And so while we are not removing the mature trees, we do have it set to remove seedlings and saplings of three inches and smaller so that we can sort of stop the cycle of those invasive species proliferating and give our new native species a chance to get established. Next slide. And these are the plantings, so these are the, what is going to be added. And again, you can see what was proposed at the June 7th hearing in the chart, and then what we are proposing today. And so overall, it is about doubling what was proposed as being planted. Approximately doubled the overall planting. We've also increased the variety in the plantings a bit because some of what is out there now, for instance, the birches do occasionally create, you know, seedlings and saplings of their own, but those are not expected to do particularly well over the next 50 years with climate change. So we've added species that we expect to do a bit better and that are more acclimated to the warmer ends of temperatures rather than sort of the cool temperatures that something like birches like. So the next slide, just the zoomed-in version of, again, where most of the other buffer work is going to happen, just so that you can see the individual trees that are being planned. Hello, and then the next slide is, the final slide is just the list of also noting just that the net increase overall in individual trees and the additional reminder that we are adding about 9,800 square feet of understory shrub perennial, et cetera, shoreline buffer, which is going to understory, shrub, perennial, et cetera, shoreline buffer, which is going to help intercept runoff and retain soil on the slopes around the pond, which are currently eroding as they are largely just turf or that turf. And I think that is the last slide. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging a Twitter handle at Boston and Bureau using the hashtag CONCOMHearing. Eleanor, did you have anything on this?
I don't have anything on this.
Okay, great. We'll just go to Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, so I appreciate you taking a second look at it. I look at the Fox Department as the people who are carrying off the city. You know, the whole idea of the canopy, et cetera. If they're happy with this addition, it, it makes me happy that you took a look and, and went the right way, less removal, more addition. So I'm, I'm satisfied with what you've come up with.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I, I am too. And I really do appreciate the fact that you guys went back and, and looked at it again. I did read the comments in the chat, and I think they're, you know, the concern expressed by the people who brought, you know, want this project to go forward are, are relevant. But I think that the issue of the tree cover in Boston is something which, you know, we really are paying attention to. And I think this is a vast improvement. So thank you.
Very great. Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Similarly, I, I appreciate your work on the BWS plans. Thank you.
Okay, great. Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I don't see any hand raised, excuse me, hands raised.
Okay, great. Okay, so with that, I would entertain, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Sorry, there is a question that just.
Uh, DB writes, do these changes affect the timing of the removal? And if you'd like to elaborate on your question.
Yeah, Tracy?
I mean, I'm, yes, because there was kind of a timetable for removal and planting. So I'm just wondering if the changes, both in what is going to be removed and what's going to be planted, affects the schedule. And also, I just would like to say, we're happy for more tree cover also, or I am, yeah.
Great, thank you. Tracy, do you want to answer that question?
The intention is still to, and Amy may have additional info, but the intention is still to bid out this project for this fall and attempt to get as, the removals would likely come first and then followed by planting. So we will try and get as much of that as we can done within the, the limits of, you know, contract execution and getting through sort of that, that side of things with Boston Parks.
Great, thanks, Tracy.
Great, good. Okay, anything else, Eleanor? Anyone else?
I don't see any additional hands raised or comments in the chat.
Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay, Eleanor, next item on the agenda, is this also Boston Parks and Rec?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, so Commissioner Long will have to recuse himself for this one as well. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number 0061821 for additional improvements to the pathway along the Charles River and uncapped far western end of Millennium Park, located at Millennium Park in West Roxbury. It's been continued from the May 5th, 2023 hearing. Is there someone here on behalf of the applicant or Eleanor, are you handling this?
Lauren Brown here from Boston Parks.
And Connor Viedman and Howard Plant are both here from CDM Smith.
Okay.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi, Connor.
Okay. So who's on?
I'm sitting in for, for someone else tonight, but I'm, I'm caught up on the project.
Okay, I have all the confidence in the world in you. So who's handling the presentation?
I'll, I'll give a brief intro and then Connor will take it over from there.
Right, can begin sharing some slides too. Is that possible?
No, if you haven't submitted them prior, we can't share independently like that. If Eleanor doesn't have them, we can't show them.
Okay.
Yeah, I hadn't seen them in our inbox. Were they, were they sent us?
Uh, no, I don't think they were.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll give a quick introduction. And so this, again, this is an amendment to an NOI which we were issued a order of conditions back in January of 2022. Out at Millennium Park, the main portion of the project was to replace the playground and repave everything that's out there. So the project was done in 2000, it was opened, dedicated. So it's been twenty-three years, so all the paving needs to be done with, redone with an overlay. We ended up breaking the project into multiple phases. So the, there's the, the east and the south parking lots and entrance roads have been repaved. They were done over the summer last year. The playground just was dedicated. The majority of this was out of the resource areas, jurisdictional areas, with the exception of a pathway along the north side of the Millennium Park, which that is, we're, that's under the final and third phase of the paving project. During the design, we did add in, we wanted to get some additional knotweed removal down along the riverbank, along the Charles River. That was approved under the previous NOI. That work did not occur. And as we get into the third phase of the project here, we've just, we've identified some additional knotweed removal areas that we would like to add as we get to that later in July or August, hopefully. So. And then as we were walking through with Boston Parks, under the previous phases, as the paving was being completed, parking lots were being completed. The use down along the river has really gained traction. There's some interesting amenities that are down there, old architectural facade pieces from some buildings from when the landfill was active. So it's become kind of an area where a lot of people are, are, are walking and enjoying the natural beauty of the area. So there have been some, for lack of a better word, I guess, trash metal debris that has become exposed over the last twenty years. We did a major trash removal. Several tons of trash was pulled out of there back in 2000, under the original landfill closure and park project. And over time, just some of that stuff has, has kind of been exposed. And we feel like a lot of it's metal, and we just feel like there's a little bit of a, a danger to the folks that have really, you know, started to use that site more and more. So we'd be looking to cut and remove any of those met, the metal debris that's down along the shore. No more than about a foot below grade. Anything that can be removed, surface debris will be picked up and, and, you know, taken away. And all we'd be doing is really surface debris removal, other than those maybe ten, fifteen pieces of metal post that are sticking out from the riverbank. And then as part of this, we would be doing some remediation along the riverbank, which Connor, I think you can probably talk a little bit about what we would be doing to remediate.
Sure, yeah. So yeah, as, as Glenn indicated, there is some protruding metal and other debris located along a forty-eight-foot section of the Charles River Bank. So removing those below grade and then restoring them with, you know, erosion control blankets and replacing the loam, common fill, quarrels, staking, you know, into the ground, standard, you know, stream bank restoration plan.
Which was included, I believe, in, in the, in the NOI amendment supplemental.
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay. In the original order of conditions, did we have conditions in there regarding the herbicide treatment?
The herbicide that was proposed in the original NOI back in 2021 is the same herbicide that is being proposed today. It's a, what is it? Herbicide T-zone plus methylated seed oil, cut in June, apply herbicide in late summer, repeat for two years. I, I don't, I haven't seen a copy of the original order of conditions, but if that was what was approved and included in the NOI, and that's a metal to, you know, Boston, then that's what's being proposed again.
Okay, okay. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, one other issue. So we went out and had to do a survey because of the long brush, and that has been submitted to Nat, Natural Heritage. So unfortunately, we know this will not be able to be closed without the letter. We have not received a letter back from Natural Heritage. But we had extend, we had extended this, I think, two or three times already. So we did want to get in front of the, in front of the commission just to see if there was any other issues or concerns that we should be prepared for prior to closing this at the next hearing.
Okay, great.
We expect that letter anytime.
Okay, yeah, because maybe, and Eleanor, maybe you know the answer to this. I would be interested in the previous conditions regarding the herbicides in the application techniques. I know that we've, we've evolved a bit, or maybe we haven't evolved, but we, we talk about it quite a bit. It feels like over the years, we may have made some changes to that. So I want to make sure they're current. Eleanor, do you know anything about the current procedures in place?
Uh, I don't know what the current procedures are, but I am looking into it as we say.
Okay, we'll look into that for the next hearing, because until we get the letter, we're going to have to continue anyway. Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Just on the, I understand picking up debris and metal right on the shore. When you need to dig a hole to get a piece out, how deep do you dig? Do you get out a foot and cut it? Or do you dig six feet, rip it out, or what's the intent?
This is going to go, this is going to be part of the bid package for that, the final paving. So we, we can specify whatever we want to for the contractor. My intention was not to have any disturbance below about twelve inches below grade. So, you know, excavate a little bit around it, cut any metal that's there, and then, and then fill it back in. Everything else will just be whatever they can pick up off the ground that's, you know, between the riverbank and the pathway. There's, there's, we, there's some still things, you know, there's a, I think there's a washing machine in there that was missed last time, or it would just, you know, it was buried in vegetation at the time. So the majority will just be surface debris. And I think, well, we'll take your recommendation, but we would be specing, you know, not to disturb anything below about the top twelve inches.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, if I knew that's what you were doing. So if your contractors, like our contractors, you have to specify, you know, a foot and state of it. So I'd be good if you are going to specify that, rather than just say, remove protruding, protruding metal. Doesn't quite cut it. So that's my only comment.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I am, I was on mute. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions for me.
Okay, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the submitting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston and Bureau using the hashtag CONCOMHearing. Okay, Eleanor, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else.
Okay. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, see you as soon as you get the letter.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Long, you can rejoin us. Commissioner Richmond, you're expendable for quorum purposes. You're never expendable, but as far as quorum, we now have a quorum for the rest of the evening if you have a conflict.
All right, I will stay for another couple of minutes, but then I'll be gone.
Okay. Okay. There has also been a number of continuances, continued have been notice of intent for DEP file number 0061704 and Boston file number 2020-007. DP file number 0061820 and Boston file number 2021-045. Also continued request for a determination of applicability regarding the property located at Two Starling and 34 and 36 Willlet Street in West Roxbury. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061928 and Boston file number 2023-018. Notice of intent, DEP file number 0061772 and Boston file number 2021-010 and DEP file number 006 and Boston file number 2023-024. The commission will now begin its regular meeting. First item up is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061558 for the Olmsted Green Mixed Income Rental Phase Project, part of a multi-phase mixed-use development in Harvard and Morton Streets located in Mattapan. This was continued from the February 15th, 2023 hearing. Eleanor, what do you have for us on this?
Uh, we've requested further information for this project, so currently staff is recommending that we continue to the next hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, next item is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061674 for the demolition reconstruction of a multifamily building and parking lot located at 33 Leyton Street in East Boston. Eleanor, this is the fish plaques.
Correct, yes. This is the fish plaques that turn out, turned out to not be necessary for this project. Again, I appreciate Commissioner Sullivan's assistance with this, clearing it up. So staff is recommending that the commission issue a certificate of compliance. It seems that everything else is cleared up.
Great, thank you. So that I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061674.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda are administrative updates. Eleanor?
I have no administrative updates tonight.
Okay, next item on the agenda is acceptance of the following order of condition. Notice of intent for DEB file number 0061943 and Boston file number 2023-032. Do I have a motion to accept that order of condition, conditions?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond? Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond, she might have left. Okay, so that carries for nothing. Last item on the agenda, you know, Eleanor, maybe I overlooked them, and I apologize. I didn't see the minutes from May 3rd.
No, and yeah, we, I'm sorry, we didn't get them into the folder in time. So I'd suggest that we hold off on those until the next hearing.
Yep, yeah, good suggestion.
Yes. That's what I'm here for.
Suggestion by necessity, right? Okay, awesome. Okay, with that, only thing left is a motion to adjourn by acclamation. Does anybody have any objections to adjourning early and enjoying this nice night?
Wow.
Not at all, not at all.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, John. Thank you for joining us. That was super helpful.
You see, I'm still dressed. I mean, this is, I brushed around it, still got the tie on. Good lord.
I know.
That is incredible. Unbelievable. All right.
Look great.
By the way, does, does Nick understand that I don't need to make a motion or a second, as long as I do one in January?
If he hasn't cut on to that by now, he's never going to catch on to it.
Those are the rules, Nick. That's, that's how it goes.
That's the rules.
All right. Okay, good to see everyone. Thank you.
Bye.
Enjoy the last day of year. Good night.
Yep, thank you.